And next I need to have a motion to approve the minutes from September fifteenth.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five council meeting.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. So first up, we'll have the we'll need to close the council meeting for the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the council meeting and open a public hearing for the presentation of the two thousand twenty-six proposed budget.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And is Beth on Zoom? Hi, Beth.
Hello. Okay, so I just wanted to go over what was advertised in Gateway so that everyone is can hear this. So for the budget estimate for the general fund, it's four million, seven hundred sixty-two thousand, five hundred fifty-seven, seven hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and eleven is the amount appropriated for the levy. Bond number two, the budget is one hundred fifteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven, and the levy portion is ninety-seven thousand. Bond three is two hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred is the budget estimate, and the estimated levy is two hundred nineteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven. Local road and street, the budget is fifty thousand, and nothing has been appropriated for the levy. Motor vehicle highway, the budget estimate is one million, one hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars, and the amount of the levy appropriated for that is one million, one hundred and sixty-two thousand. Park estimated budget is seven hundred and eleven thousand, sixty-six dollars, and six hundred and four thousand is the estimated levy appropriated. The cumulative capital, the CCI, is ten thousand for the budget, and there's no levy appropriated. The CCD, which is the cumulative capital development, is the budget is thirty-six thousand, and the maximum levy that's been appropriated is one hundred forty-four thousand, four oh three. The total estimated budget is seven million, forty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-one, and the estimated levy is two million, nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one. The property tax caps are estimated eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty, which I had mentioned before is much higher than what was last year, but because of the amount of the changes in the legislature, the property tax caps are much higher. We've also budgeted in the general fund for an excess levy of four hundred and thousand. We anticipate that we probably will only get about three hundred and sixty thousand, but we always want to budget high to make sure that we are able to meet what has been filed. The other thing is, is we've estimated about fifty thousand dollars in additional annexations that we anticipate happening before the end of the year. So that's also in the levy portion of the general fund. The adoption date is October twentieth at six thirty at the same location. With that, are there any questions from the public?
I don't have any. No questions for Beth?
I don't think so.
I think we're good, Beth.
Okay.
On the, are we gonna ask questions about the budget? I noticed that we used to only give like a three percent raise, the cost of living at two point nine. Some of these have jumped up to nine percent, ten percent.
Yeah, that was pointed out to me, and there was some confusion on that. What it is, is there's twenty-seven pays next year, so it appears like it's higher. But because they get paid every other week, there happens to be twenty-seven, so that's why it's higher. We, in the budget, we put five percent increase. So keep in mind, there's a five percent increase as a placeholder, except for police, which we had talked about when I presented it. We've done a salary adjustment for that in order to be more competitive. So we've made the base salary for the police to be seventy thousand approximately, and everything else we put in at five percent. That's in the budget. When, but you approve the salary, it's called Form seventeen, but the salary ordinance, which will be sent out normally, it's late November, and you have it either presented in the November or the first of December, and then it's approved in the second meeting. That's what is based off of what people actually get paid.
Okay, because I'm just curious, because I know that we're, we really don't know what we're getting from the state. A couple of months ago, we were talking about, you know, we don't know. Do we know what our cuts were, and if we have to raise, how do we, how do we recoup those costs?
Well, within this budget, I've allowed for monies that we anticipate receiving. Some of the things have not been certified yet, but they're never certified by this time of year. Like, I, I can tell you what, like your, your SIVA, your FIT, and some of those taxes, which I'll be honest, are fairly small. Your levy, which is the estimated maximum levy, is what you should get, more than likely is what you should get. Again, we have to get, and I'll have this in the next meeting, is for the excess levy appeal for approval. And then again, that will be submitted and will be, you know, again, that's an estimate. And, but I've budgeted based on what we normally receive, what we anticipate receiving, and making sure that we have that. Then what happens is, is you approve it, but then what's called a seventeen eighty-two comes out when they certify it, and they tell you what our budget was approved for, based on what they know at that point. And at that point, we can then adjust it, or whatever needs to be done at that time if need to be. So there's still more opportunity if adjustments need to be made, if they anticipate not receiving. But I'll be honest, normally, it's within the realm of what this budget, and it fits within it, and they won't approve a budget that is not funded. So you can't have negative cash, and we're not in fear of cash being negative, but I'm just saying, they will not fund those budgets.
Okay, so the reason why I'm asking, so it's overall, you budget at five percent for everybody, even though it's written down here as nine percent, nine percent.
It's because there's twenty-seven pays, and so it's based off of that. The problem is, it's, it's higher because your, this year's budget is based off of twenty-six pays. So it looks like it's higher because there's one extra pay in next year's budget.
Okay, I just, I just need to explain that to people when they see this budget.
That's fair.
Then, there was one other question about the budget. Let me, let me see what I highlighted here. Because I noticed all the health insurance, everything went, workers' comp went up a hundred and, well, over a hundred percent.
Well, one, well, the insurance has gone up, and also our regular, part of it's health insurance, but their regular insurance went up dramatic. Because of the issues that happened in the town, our insurance went up thirty-nine percent. So that was paid in, believe, August of this year for the increase, which runs from August till the, of August next year, but then we'll be paying in August of next year. We increased it by thirty more percent because we don't know what that's gonna be, and we want to make sure that we've got enough covered for next year's amount as well. So yes, it went up dramatically.
Okay, I know we had some big claims, but, okay. That was the only thing that really stuck out with me, was the workers' comp really went.
Yeah, and if you have any questions before the budget is approved in a couple of weeks, feel free to reach out to me or Missy, and I'm happy to have a conversation or what with anyone.
Okay, because we, even, even our liability insurance has gone way higher.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's the liability, that's what that is.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Okay, any more questions for Beth? Are you good? Okay, yep. Okay. So we, we need to vote on this tonight, or we, one more?
No, we have to, you just closed that, and we'll vote on it the next meeting on October twentieth, and I will be at that meeting to go over that, and then the annexation, not the annexation, I'm sorry, the levy appeal. So I'll be there to go over that as well, so I'll be in person.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there any public comment?
Do we have any public comment on the budget? Okay.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and reconvene the regular council meeting.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, now on to old business. Council will consider the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nine A, a text amendment to the Mercho Louth PUD.
All right, so for this particular item, I won't go through the presentation unless you need me to, but you had already had first reading on it back in early September, and from from here, it went to the plan commission, and there was public input that was received. There were a couple of comments that came up from the public. One had to do with the setback that was proposed for the new building along Thousand North and South Madison Boulevard. And then another comment came up where there was one resident in the southern area of Fortville that wanted to have a berm, a ten-foot-high berm with some landscaping there. And the developer stated that, at least the way that the project was laid out, there wouldn't be enough room to accommodate a berm of that height, although there should be some opportunities to put in landscaping along those areas in question. And those would be shown in more detail as part of the plan commission's formal review of the complex, the apartment complex, once it comes in for site plan review. So beyond that, the, the plan commission issued a unanimous positive recommendation. So the developer, Michael Garvey, is on the line, but if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them. Thank you.
I like to just not have the berm at all, because I think the smooth transition between the neighborhood would look better than just putting a big mound of, you don't want to, I, I think it's distracting more than it is. And that's the whole point of putting those single-story units up next to Old Town, so it's a good, smooth transition.
Adam, is it normally required to screen when you have residential backing up to residential?
Not necessarily. I believe generally speaking, if you had a different zoning district altogether, let's say you had a multifamily zoning district that was next to a single-family zoning district, there probably are, I, I don't remember the actual dimensions or requirements that would be required, but I'm fairly certain that it would typically be required, although in this particular case, don't forget there are those large ponds that separate the areas anyway, so I would say from a planning perspective that certainly if we had multifamily that was really close to single-family homes, sure, putting berms and fences and stuff like that could be warranted, but in my professional assessment, while I understand the concerns from the residents that are there, just seeing a farm field right now, and it's been that way for decades, of course, but, but to the points that were raised is, it's still gonna be a single-story residential on the perimeter of those ponds. So it's a pretty, it's actually a better transition than what was originally proposed as part of the PUD, in my view.
I agree. Anybody have any questions for Garvey?
I guess I just had a question as far as like where the, the units come back to back. What kind of lighting is gonna be back behind there in that alleyway?
Good question. I would tell you, we've not scoped that to date, but our vision would be, because people, you know, want a a balance, I think, between safety and comfort, that it will be a typical light by the garage and by the front door. But we would not envision, if the question is, to put streetlights in there. I don't think we would envision doing that.
Beeps, is that?
I guess, is that pretty good then? Your thoughts?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, as long as there's some lighting through there, it makes it easier for the officers to see through the evenings, and I think streetlights or anything like that would be too much, especially, you know, that's the front of their house. You'd have it glaring in there all day, all night. As long as there's lighting there, and I'm assuming a lot of them are probably gonna be on either motion detect or light detection or wall packs. Yeah, I'm okay with that, as long as there's enough that, you know, it's visible through there.
Okay.
Oh, I forgot, one question. What were they gonna do about the air conditioning, the screening of the air conditioners? They don't have a flat roof.
Sure, they had actually mentioned at the plan commission meeting that the one tweak to the plan is that instead of the air conditioning units being ground-mounted, they would actually be roof-mounted, but they're gonna be behind parapet walls. So they'd be screened in that fashion, and there would be clusters of HVAC units that you would see with larger buildings, same, same kind of setup here.
Ready to make a motion?
Yep. You both have any question?
I'm good.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nine A, text amendment to the Mercho Louth PUD.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We need to sign this one here. Okay, next up, we have new business. Council will hear the Parks and Recreation Survey results and master plan snapshot presented by Travis Trinberger, Prose Consulting, and Heath.
Good evening, Council. Heath was the Parks Manager for the record, yep. Travis from Prose is here. He's gonna go over the slideshow and kind of give you a background. We can answer any questions that you guys may have, or any questions that the public may have regarding kind of what that snapshot looks like. And then I believe the final slide of this is kind of a timeline of what we're looking like moving forward, so we can go over that and answer any other questions as far as that's concerned as well. So Travis, we'll, we'll get started. Like I said, I'll come back up if anybody's got any questions that I need to answer as well. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to come provide an update on Parks and Recreation Master Plan findings to this point. As you may have already been debriefed, Prose Consulting has been hired to help support the master planning process that Heath had already started, primarily in the way of community engagement and developing funding strategies, as well as honing in on the action plan that will eventually be submitted to the Indiana Department of Natural Resources for official approval. So we're looking to do that by mid-November, and so, yeah, we'll talk about the timeline here as we get to the end. You saw on your screen there the, the scope items that we were tasked with. Yeah, you can keep scrolling down, sorry. So as far as stakeholder engagement, back at the beginning of the summer, we put out a online survey to the community. About a hundred and fifty-one responses that I think we got over the course of about a month and a half, about six weeks. So this evening, just wanted to provide some high-level updates on the key insights from that survey. So as far as recreation programming goes, we asked respondents to weigh in on where they currently go for programs, because we understand Fortville does not offer much in the way of programming, recreation programming, more facility-oriented at this point. So it's important to understand where users are currently going, because that can be studied further as far as what type of programming is in demand for your community. And so this, it's not surprising, the city of Fishers came in as the highest, they probably offer the most programs for this region, as well as Hancock Wellness Center and Town of McCordville. Top barriers for participating in recreation programs would be the lack of awareness. And again, that, that goes hand in hand with the fact that there aren't many programs currently offered, and so that's probably why a lot of people aren't aware of what's being offered. But we did ask additional questions on what, how they would want to learn about future programs. Limited program variety and inconvenient times were also on the list. So the, the top program areas, and then we like to speak in terms of core program areas. Each department should have a, some core areas of focus based on community needs. And so residents requested that youth and teen programs, family-focused events, and senior programming be the top focus areas, especially regarding age segments. And we'll talk a little bit more about demographics, but there was a strong desire for financially accessible programs that came through the survey. And so being mindful of how programs are priced in the future, that can be a funding strategy to help offset operational costs. However, there are still low-income households that need to participate in those programs as well. Next page, please. We asked them what their priorities would be, so understanding that there's limited funding to invest in, in parks and recreation within the community, and so we asked what, what would be the priorities for investing those funds? Far and away, the, the top response was improving what you already have, so taking care of what you already have. And, and that's something we see in many park systems in, you know, not only the central Indiana region, but the Midwest as well. More special events and community festivals. I understand Fortville and this area, the northeast side of Indianapolis, has quite a few values, special events, community festivals. It's a great way to get that community engage, cultivate that community engagement, adding outdoor fitness and, and recreation opportunities. So outdoor fitness is a trend that's been around for a few years now. You know, started with obviously trails and connectivity, but there's ways to enhance the parks with outdoor equipment that everybody can use. And then accessibility improvements and trail and greenway expansions were some of the, the other ones that kind of rounded out the top five. Updating current parks and facilities, trail and greenway expansions, and acquiring and developing more parkland were the top funding priorities. So we asked individuals, you know, how would you spend a, a set amount of money? What's the percentage you would spend that on? Those, those were the top three areas. There, there was also strong interest in indoor recreation spaces, including gyms and wellness centers. Next page, please. So we asked survey respondents to rank the key actions, understanding this is a five-year master plan. And so what would be the outcomes that they would want to see from this master plan? So prioritizing upgrading, prioritize upgrading existing parks by adding other play opportunities, including water play, developing more recreation programming, and so that doesn't necessarily have to be just, that doesn't necessarily have to fall just in-house on the Parks Department. There can be other partnership opportunities that help develop that additional programming that we'll talk here in a little bit about. Of course, expanding the trail and greenway networks, increasing awareness and engagement. And so as you create more services or enhance your facilities, it's gonna be important to connect with the community, to educate them. You know, what's going on with the park system, and that's another way to get them involved. And then, like I said, collaborating with schools, regional providers, and nonprofits that can maximize resources, but, but also expand programming outcomes. Next page, please. So one of the other ways we engaged the community was a few focus groups back in the spring. We asked similar questions. Actually, the focus groups came before the online survey went out. We wanted to consult with those individuals to understand what needed to be included in the survey, as far as how the questions were built. A lot of similar strengths and opportunities came from the focus groups. However, there were some more specifics regarding Landmark Park and Memorial Park. The, the other strengths, the, the parks are easy to rent and accessible. There seems to be minimal red tape for organizing activity, so it's a smaller agency, so naturally staff are more accessible and open to, to new ideas. And there does seem to be a spirit of collaboration between the department and community partners. So we were able to involve individuals from, I believe, the library and Hancock Health, and a few other partners from the community in the focus groups to understand how they, they wanted to be a part of the, the solution going forward in the future. Next page, please. So some of the challenges, of course, Fortville is growing exponentially, and there are concerns about keeping up with facility demand. Naturally, as new residents move into a community, they're going to expect, you know, at least the same level of facilities and amenities that they had in the prior community. And so it's, it's about, and that's one of the, the main purposes of a master plan, is understanding how the Parks and Recreation Department can manage that growth and demand to make those smart investments. And one of the areas, as we mentioned earlier, was, you know, taking care of what you have, doing what you currently do well, and then, you know, expanding on that. Of course, it was talked about earlier with the budget, there are, there are concerns about reduced state funding, and the lack of alternative revenue sources were raised. And so that, that was, that's one part of our work, is to identify some key funding strategies that can help offset the impact of future Parks and Recreation Services on the, the town's overall operational budget, and more specifically, the, the, the general fund, the property tax fund. Participants were concerned about aging infrastructure, particularly the restrooms and the play structures were included in that, and, and I understand, you know, from the data that's been shared, that there have been recent investments in the parks, and so it's gonna be important to keep that momentum going. Next page, please. So community needs, of course, restrooms were brought up again, and for Landmark and Memorial Park, there is And for Landmark and Memorial Park, there is, there was strong interest throughout the focus groups. A lot of discussion on dedicated indoor space for fitness training and wellness programming. There was an idea proposed about a, a new field house type style facility that could accommodate youth, youth and adult sports demands. There was more interest in camps, events and sports for youth. That is one thing that we found when we were taking inventory of this area is there are not a lot of childcare opportunities in the town. And oftentimes that could fall on a Parks and Recreation Department of Town to help supplement those offerings especially out of school programming for camps, whether that be fall break, spring break, summer break. So that, that is an opportunity for program growth. That does require additional staff. But traditionally camp programming has proven to bring in revenue to help offset the, the operational impact, operational costs by adding more staff to, to support that program need. But there are other partners in the community that could help with that. And then improvements to signage and educational elements throughout the park and just general beautification. And continuing the theme of what's been going on with your downtown and some of the recent improvements. Next page. So part of our work was to understand who Fortville Parks and Recreation is serving. So we did a demographics and recreation trends analysis. We used Esri, a GIS data source to pull our numbers and, and we project out the population for the next 15 years with a straight line regression method. And so as you can see, there's a steady climb of population expected, especially over the next five to 10 years. And that is, that is something that will have to be managed. That is an impact on the current parks and facilities. And so how do you distribute that in a better manner over the next five to 10 years? That's, that's going to be key to keep pace with growth. Next page, please. We also looked at Fortville's current makeup and future makeup of different age segments. And the, the age segment distribution remains fairly steady over the next 15 years. But Fortville is not unlike any other community, especially in this area. Fortville is an aging community. And so as you look at the types of recreation programs and facilities that would be planned for the future, you want to make sure you're including intergenerational opportunities. You want to make sure you're including the older generation. Oftentimes they want the same opportunities as the middle age to younger generation as far as recreation in the parks. And so being mindful of that with everything from facility improvements to future recreation programming will be important. But you can see youth still make up a pretty large portion of the community as well. Next page, please. We also looked at income. And so we look at this from a median household and a per capita perspective. And so median household, Fortville is actually above the state and national averages. However, per capita income, Fortville's above the state, but below the national average. And so what this means is we talked earlier about a, an alternative funding source could be through user fees, program fees. And so this is a key data source to understand, you know, what level of fee could the community take on with certain services? We always advocate for community wide services to be the lower cost that are oftentimes funded with tax revenue sources because they are for a greater portion of the community. As you get more individualized with your services, that's where you could start to charge higher fees that are more aligned with maybe the market rate because that, that particular program is only really benefiting that individual or that, that particular household. So again, just another data source to be mindful of for future planning purposes. Next page, please. And so this, this slide kind of summarizes what I talked about, you know, managing the aging population trends in terms of recreation programs offered, accounting for the potential for disposable income that could be spent on recreation services, especially at the, the household or family level. And of course, the population growth, accounting for that and planning new facilities, amenities and programs. Next page, please. So we also looked at recreation trends and you see on your screen outdoor activity MPI. So that is the market potential index. And so that essentially tells you what is the potential for individuals to participate in certain programs. And the reason we included outdoor activity as the main one on here is because that's where Fortville scored the highest. This helps understand what types of facilities could be planned in the future and what types of recreation programs may be prioritized. And it did come through in the survey that residents value outdoor recreation. And so that's apparent with this MPI data source as well. However, there were a few other activities that showed high potential like golf and basketball, as well as tennis for sports. And then walking for exercise, swimming and weightlifting were the top fitness activities. So something to know for maybe future indoor facility planning purposes.
On this chart, you've got fishing on here twice. Is there something else that should have taken the place of? In the chart. I'm wondering if there's something.
Oh, yeah. So what? Okay. So one of them is freshwater fishing. One of them is saltwater fishing. Understand that Fortville does not have much saltwater, but it, it does account for a purchasing of gear. You know, trips, vacations, stuff like that. So, yeah, we do get that question quite a bit. Thank you for pointing it out, though. So as I mentioned earlier, another main part of our, our work is supporting Heath and his team with the master plan is coming up with funding strategies. And so what you see on your screen here with the table, we, we like to look at the operations in terms of budget per capita. And we're able to benchmark that against not only local community, but also the National Recreation and Park Association has what's called Park Metrics in which park agencies across the United States are able to, to put in their data and it compiles benchmark averages. And so we looked at it from a perspective of the national median for operating budget per capita compared to what Fortville is at or was in 2024. And then we were able to hone in on the region. So the Great Lakes region, what does that look like? And so Fortville is above the Great Lakes region average for communities that are less than 20,000 residents, but they are below the national median. And so the, the point of this is to explain that, you know, Fortville may be okay where it's at now as far as funding for the park system, but when you put growth up against this, there is room to grow with the budget in order to keep up that level of service that's expected from the community. And so that's where you'll want to look at alternative funding sources to help supplement that shortfall with the operating budget. So it doesn't all just fall on the property tax fund. Next page, please. So revenue snapshot, as I mentioned, the, the Parks and Recreation Operating Budget has steadily increased with the exception of, of course, 2020, there was a minor dip there, but it, it rebounded through 2024, about 173% increase over the last seven years. So one could argue that the budget has increased with community growth as much as possible. But when you start to break that down as far as how much the cost of doing business is within Parks and Recreation, especially the inflationary factors, the economic uncertainties, it becomes a little, a little more apparent that, you know, there does need to be likely more that needs to be added to the operation budget to keep, keep pace with the growth. Also on the screen, you see some alternative revenue sources that Fortville Parks and Recreation already takes advantage of, which is a great sign. Sponsorships and donations, rental revenue, those could all be ancillary revenue sources, especially rental revenue can help support facility rentals, the upkeep of shelters, even indoor facilities that are rented out to the community. Next page, please. Capital investments. So this is part of what we gained an understanding with Heath on what's already been invested in the parks. Some of the projects are still ongoing. It was great to, to walk through the park to see some of these new amenities and facilities that, that are starting to pop up as far as what's been invested with these two bonds. I understand there are upcoming improvements to Landmark Park as well. So bonding certainly is a, a strategy that, that should probably be explored for the future as well. Especially if you're looking at more complex facilities or land acquisition or developing parks in larger phases, that would certainly be an option if possible. Next page. So this is where we, we actually met with several of the staff in workshop format to go through a whole variety of types of funding sources that we see not only in central Indiana, but in the Midwest region and across the country as far as how Parks and Recreation Departments are having to become more creative in funding operations and capital projects. And so these are several on your, on your screen that you see that Fortville currently takes advantage of, but also some opportunities. I mentioned user fees, of course. Those could also come with additional programs. Grants is a, is, is a challenging one right now because of the uncertainty with not only the federal government, but the state government. So we all, and we, even before, you know, the, the last couple of years, we always said that you shouldn't be solely relying on grants anyway. Grants kind of fund the initial project, but then you still have to figure out how to pay for it and sustain that going forward. And so we, you know, before Heath and his team embark on a, on a grant application, want to make sure that it fits the community needs, that it's going, and that's going to be able to be sustained, whether that's across multiple different types of departments, not necessarily just the Parks Department. But we, we were listing in the master plan, a whole list of criteria to go through to make sure you're applying for the right grant. Of course, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan is one step toward qualifying for land and water conservation funds that come from the federal government passed down to the state. However, we understand the DNR has not opened that to local communities over this last year. And so that's kind of uncertain as well. But there are other funding opportunities through the, the transportation alternative grants, CDVG. Definitely the Indiana Trails Program is recommended. And I believe, I believe Heath has, is applying for that currently. That can help with some missing links within the trail system. So there are still some small wins with, with grants. And then you see some other funding sources here with land leases, easements, interlocal agreements. That falls into the partnership realm as well. So those, those are all defined in the master plan itself. Next page, please. So to summarize all that with, with where Fortville Parks and Recreation is currently and where they need to be in, in the next five years, we, we always preach diversifying funding sources to reduce tax dependency. Continue to build partnerships, look for strategic grants, sponsorships could come in the way of naming rights for specific parks, facilities or amenities. And as you develop programs and start to develop your user fee funding source more, making sure that the, the council and staff and town management are on the same page as far as how services are priced. And a lot of times that comes in terms of classifying services and developing specific cost recovery targets that staff would need to achieve, whether that's achieving 100% direct expenses or including indirect or overhead experience, expenses in a program. Those cost recovery and pricing policies help set the foundation for that funding source. And then of course, aligning capital investments with master plan priorities. And so the master plan priorities are backed by community input. And so you can be confident that you're spending the money in the right way for the residents. Next page, please. And here are the next steps. So we anticipate having a draft plan to the town council for approval by November 3rd. That keeps us in line with IDNR's requirement of having a draft plan submitted to the state by November 15th. And then typically it's two to three months of review on their part. Sometimes it comes back sooner. It just depends on their workload in which we get feedback. And then we have a certain period of time to make edits. And so that would be through the winter. And then the final plan would be due to DNR by April 15th of next year. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or have Heath come back up to help answer questions that the council may have.
In the beginning there, you had mentioned splash pads and, and water play. Is there plans on doing that or?
That would be a town decision. We haven't gotten that far as far as what a water feature looks like. That from a parks perspective, from a town perspective, we would have to look and see what, you know, from a budget standpoint, overhead and just, that's always been kind of high on the priority. I think anybody's been around here for a while has understood that, you know, splash pad, pool, whatever has always kind of been there. You know, I don't know that we, we would have to look at areas and we would have to look at it, have a serious conversation about what the overhead and maintenance would be on, on something such as that. So we, we don't have, right now that the, the master plan, and that's where, just make it clear that that is a rough draft by 11-3. That then we'll go to the DNR, they'll give us their feedback, but that's also the time that, that you guys as a council can really dig into this. And okay, well, in, in, as a town, you know, between Joe, myself and you guys, really figuring out what those priorities are over the next five years and getting those listed within the master plan at that point in time to be able to send back. So that, that'll be a discussion that we can have moving forward, if that's something the general community and, and we feel, you know, fits the town. But as of now, we don't, there's nothing set in stone as far as like capital improvement projects outside of what we've already discussed with Landmark and a couple of the other things. So. Any other questions? And just real quick, Travis mentioned it. I was going to say this in my, my reports. The Indiana Trails Grant was submitted. It was due October 1st. It ended up being, I believe, 88 pages with VS Engineering and a bunch of whatnot information. It had everything from financial planning, like showing that we were able to financially maintain those trails up to, I believe it was 25 years, over the next 25 years. All that paperwork was submitted. I believe they award that in February, so we won't know until then who, who has it. But I do think with the plan and the application, grant application that we submitted with having recommendation letters from Hamilton County Parks, Hancock Health and the school all sent in recommendation letters that are submitted with that. Hopefully we've got a good shot at it and I, I believe in total is $483,000 is what it would be to make that connector trail from Flatford Park through Memorial Park and connecting with the trail that's up above the Dog Park currently. So it's about, I think it's 0.38 miles is what the total was length on that trail. So hurry up and wait. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have a special event request for Chili in the Park, October 26th. 10 a.m. to noon, presented by Angelica Rangul of Gateway Community Church. Guess she's not here. So do we just pass it on or? She's not on Zoom, is she?
I'm okay to make a, you know, motion to we move forward, but.
She's not on there.
Yeah, I was gonna say there's no additional police services, no rest. I think they just want to put up some signs and.
I don't see anything.
They advertised it last year. It was their first event and they advertised it during Treats on Main. And it wasn't a huge event the next day, but they're always really good about cleaning up the park and stuff.
Yep. Yeah, I think we're good.
I'll make a motion to approve Chili in the Park, Sunday, October 26th, 2025, 10 a.m. to noon, presented by Gateway Community Church.
Second. All in favor? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hope you have a good event. Okay. Next up, we have Town Reports show.
I really don't have a whole lot to report on this evening, but I will tell you that the change order that the council approved a couple of meetings ago for $160,000 for additional sidewalks. Contractors had moved back in town, I believe it's last week. And they're working pretty fast and I look to have all that done probably before our next council meeting. Hopefully, we can get that contract closed out.
Yeah, they're moving real fast.
Yeah. That's all I have unless you have anything for me to say.
Uh, next we have Adam.
Yes, I had just quickly, what I wanted to mention is I I know I had sent you an email about it, but I just want to mention for the public in terms of the single family residential permit activity, because it is noteworthy. We've done 158 new single family residential builds from January 1 until the end of September. And that is already by far and away a record for an entire year. I think the most we've ever done, I want to say, was like 115, 120, and that was a few years ago. And so in the last three months alone, we've done out of that 158, we've done 122. So I bring that up just so everybody can see the the magnitude that we're growing in terms of what we're used to around here. So it's a good thing. Other than that, if you have any questions on anything, I'd be happy to address that.
The only thing I refract that I got a question for Joe was that NDOT, they still have construction signs on Main Street and popular main facing that way. Do they know when the when their end is, they're wrapping up?
I'm I'm not sure when their end date is. It was I I expected it to be long ago. I've reached out to them about those signs that are still kind of identifying if there's construction going on on the Broadway corridor. They said that they would go ahead and see about getting those removed because there's not enough activity going on right now. I did reach out to them about the signs or some that are laying down on the sidewalk on the north side. And they're not really sure who those belong to. Those were either BP project or scooters or Autozone or wouldn't be scooters, but it would have been Autozone. So they're going to go ahead and get those removed as well because they've been reaching out to all these different companies that supposedly they belong to. And they all swear that they've picked up their signs, nobody's claiming them, so they're going to go and get them out of the way.
We should send our Parks Department out there to grab them.
Well, I did tell them that if they didn't get them picked up, pretty soon we are gonna get them out of there. If somebody wants to come and claim them.
So you think by November they'll have those signs gone? It's just my neighbors are saying they keep mowing around them and.
Yeah, no, I get it and I would like to see that project completed. I'm not exactly sure what the holdup is. They've still got some punch list items. Well, I don't I don't know if I want to call it punchless item, there's some remaining items. And then we still have to walk the project and do a punch list. So I'm not exactly sure what the holdup is.
All right, thank you.
Guess Heath is done now, he's done with his, Chief.
Let's see. So you have two handouts and the only difference you're really going to notice in them is the data collision at the top. One is January 1 of 2022 until 6 October 2022. And then the other one is January 1, 2025, and then today, 6 October of 25. And Fritz had asked me if the road diet had helped with accidents. And I gave him just a real quick, brief, yes, it has. I'll get you the the statistics and the data at the meeting here. So I wanted to go over that briefly. The first page on both of them are just the pictures of the hotspots in town. Obviously Broadway Maple, Broadway Merrill. That's kind of where a lot of the accidents and then just up and down at all the intersections. Page two is you're not your satellite view, just a standard map view. And then the last page, the big number that I saw the difference in the accidents were at this time in 2022, there were a total of 80 collisions in Fortville that we had already responded to. And I added them up. Property damage accidents along Broadway, we had 30 in 2022 before the road diet and then four injury accidents. And then in 2025, we've had 58 total collisions along Broadway. There were only 24 property damage and only one injury accident. So the number of accidents have gone down and the number of accidents with injury. And I believe that's probably because of the road diet and the speeds along Broadway, which are a good thing. So I just wanted to bring that data up because I know people ask, you know, is it really helping? Joe and I had a discussion to see, and we all know at certain times in Fortville, you're going from light to light to light and sometimes they're not synced right. Joe and I had that discussion. He's reached out to NDOT to see if there's a better way we can sync that to get traffic moving a little more efficiently along the the busy times of the day. So we're waiting to hear back from them on that. Any other questions that I missed for you, Fritz?
No, it's so it's gone down six, but the the injuries have gone down also.
Yeah.
By three.
Yep, by three, and that's that's a major, I mean, a fender bender is one thing, but then when somebody gets injured and they have to go by ambulance, and that's how we determine a injury accident, not just somebody says, oh, I think I may be hurt, but once we get there, we have to to write down the injuries on the accident reports. So they have to have some sort of classifying injury for us to determine that an injury accident.
I've 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 noticed that they're they're not as severe because in the past there'd be cars getting flipped over and.
Oh, yeah.
And rear ends were a little bit more severe. The severity's probably gone down also, even though there's 24 accidents to 30.
Right.
I bet you the the severity's gone down.
Oh, yeah.
Especially over at the gas station. It seems like that's where people were getting T-bone the most, pulling out there.
Right. And that basically goes from, and I I chose the accidents along Broadway from Shaw Street, which is 300 West out to County Line going north.
Yeah.
So.
I'm curious because it seemed like Merrill was a hotspot too for years.
It it was on the 2022. It looks like there's just a couple dots in there. There was actually seven accidents.
That's what I thought.
It's just I couldn't zoom in enough to pinpoint that with with able to and being able to get from Shaw out to the county line.
Yeah, it still seems over there at Merrill, when you're watching people that want to take a left-hand turn out of there. It's still there. It it could be dangerous.
Yeah.
Is there a thought on making that a right turn only?
What's happening is people are putting a gap. People are trying to get through.
Oh, yeah.
But then there might be a car coming this way that they can't see. It just, I think we've been fortunate, that's all.
Yep, and and a right turn only would be great. The issue is right there at Main and Broadway, it's right turn only and people go straight across there all the time and try to turn left there all the time. And that's just coming off well, so there's not a lot of traffic doing that, so.
Yeah, I will say NDOT was looking to put a median across in front of Merrill Street. And with the the construction, everything that was going on, it was a little more difficult since the road was already partially built. They would had went back in and closed part of it down. It was kind of a wait and see, we're going to look and see if it's really needed or not. So I know they're going to be monitoring the crashes at that intersection and hopefully there won't be enough to warrant any additional curbs.
Was it, yeah, I think there was a crash, what, last week? Where somebody was coming on Main Street and somebody waved them out and the car just got them on the side. So they relied on somebody.
That happens a lot.
Block, so that was the two spots that on there that.
That's what happened to our police truck a couple of years ago, our brand new police truck. Somebody waved somebody through and he was coming through and they T-boned him.
Yeah. All right, yeah, it looks like the gas stations have gotten a lot better.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, and then just a couple other things. If everybody notices art in the back, it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we have our pink badges on. So we're sporting those again this year. Let's see, again, a reminder, I'll be gone next meeting to Denver for that conference for International Association Chiefs of Police. We got confirmation last week, week before that Officer Lanning will be attending ILEA starting in January. Officer Payne, our new hire, we're waiting on perf. And we've been waiting on perf for a couple of months now, so they've changed some of their requirements and we're learning the ways that they want them. So hopefully that will get completed soon. I talked to him Thursday, they said they had everything they needed from us to get him going into perf. So hopefully he was my July hire. Hopefully we can get him hired soon or the end of the year. And then last but not least, I don't know if everyone saw it or not, but in the Greenfield Reporter, that new power was started charging for their in-car body cam or their body worn videos. And they took a poll of the amount it costs for everybody else in the counties, 150 bucks. And ours is 12, although we do, we spend a lot of time redacting. If they have to go in the hospital, they have to blur everything out. Any juveniles are on a school, we have to to do all that. I would like to reapproach the salary ordinance on the body cam and in-car video fees at some point. The fee schedule, that's, did I say salary ordinance? Sorry, fee schedule at some point. To talk about that because we are spending quite a bit of time on FOIA requests and people asking for some body cam footage. So.
Who typically, are you talking like lawyers or?
Lawyers, random press, just random people. People that want to be nosy, people that want to try to catch the police and not responding to FOIA requests and suing them. There's all kinds of stuff. So I would like to to discuss that and and look about that fee schedule and see if we can do something to get that more in line with what everyone else in the county is at. Other than that, I think that's all I got.
I have a question for you. The new, I know we've all seen the new e-bikes that everybody has now. There seems to be a real problem with the scooters and the e-bikes, but what I saw the other day was very scary. And I don't know, it's step up from an e-bike, it looks like a minibike to me. And I've seen these boys before, but they're wearing helmets, but there's no plates on them and they're on the main roads riding these bikes. And they're they look like a miniature version of dirt bikes. But they they look to me like they should be licensed, but there is no plate holders. But they're they're bigger than an e-bike, but they sound like a motorcycle. And I got the tail end picture of two of them that were sitting at the light there on Vitality, but.
Engines or do they have pedals?
No, they're engines. They're in, there's no pedals on them. It 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 looks that way, but it it looks so much like the e-bike that it just, it's really hard to tell. But I've seen these.
It's not like a 50.
I'm not sure that this isn't a gas engine. I, like I said, I couldn't look at it close enough, but I've seen them before. It's the same two kids, but they did have helmets on and they go fast. They're not, and those e-bikes go fast, you know?
And electric bikes and kids cruising up and down Main Street and crossing places and not looking and then getting hit and.
I mean, I know that's hard to patrol, just like the golf cart thing. I know it's the same thing, but I didn't know if there was something that we could do to.
We are, I know several of our officers have spent some time on education with the the young people riding these things and letting them know they should be wearing helmets and they need to obey traffic laws and.
I will say these kids were obeying the law, but I don't think they should have been out on the main road with that bike. There's nothing to protect them, you know, they've got, they don't have full face helmets on, they're just they're like practice helmets or something, you know? Yeah, yeah.
Can we put together something that just kind of says what's permitted and what's not permitted and just post it out on our?
Probably be a good idea. Yeah, they don't look and that's that's the unfortunate thing. It's scary to watch them do that, yeah. It's it's so hard to manage that. I mean, we can put signs up and have the discussion, but they're going to do what they're going to do. The parents need to get involved. I have to hate to say that, but.
That's why I was kind of mentioning putting it out there what's permitted and what's.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Parents might see it and say, ooh, better get Junior off that.
Yeah.
Here or something, you know?
And the more trails we get, the more we're going to see that too. But I'd rather see them on a trail than I would a sidewalk because obviously there's not as many crossings.
Would the sidewalks and up and down Main Street and.
They fly down the alleys in town, they never look, I mean, I watch them. I mean, they just, they never look.
They had the conversation.
It's just.
Next day she got hit by a car.
Yeah.
They told her that she needed to look and obey traffic laws and she didn't and she got hit.
Yeah.
Is that the that main?
No, that was up on.
Another one.
No, maybe that was up, but yeah.
She said she was.
Maybe we can just put something out like a public notices or something or something, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah. Get some information out there and go from there.
I'm sure we'll see more of it as time goes on, so they're not cheap, they're not cheap.
Yeah. Yeah.
But when the weather warms back up and after Christmas, I'm sure a lot of people have a lot of new toys to go play.
Okay, Missy's not here. Jacob, did Alex have anything or you have anything? Nope. Public comment, anyone have a public comment? If you please come up to the microphone there, yeah? Yeah, you.
I'm Jennifer Chavez and I am in Northwest Fortville. And I was originally on the agenda, but I was taken off the agenda because we determined that my HOA was supposed to handle this question. But my HOA today responded and said that they would like for you to handle this question. I just want to close the back of my alleyway for trick or treat hours so that the kids can come to our house because we do a big hoopla and not worry about traffic. That's all I'm asking.
Uh, I can handle that. If you want to stick around after the meeting, I'll get you my card.
Okay.
We can have a discussion about that and if I don't.
All the neighbors know.
Be an influx of traffic in the alleyway, I think.
One way and.
Just you know that the alleys up there are private, they're not our alleys.
Okay.
So it makes it a little bit easier even on.
Wanted me to.
I think as long as the police and fire are aware.
Dispatch know if something were to happen back there in one of those areas, how to get around and.
Yeah, it's just two houses, it's just mine and the neighbor and then the main alleyway behind it because we're all rear load homes. The it's still accessible that way completely. And we're not blocking the alley, I just want the kids to be able to stand in it, yeah. Because they do.
We'll be out there too, so it's okay.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, yeah.
Thank you. That's great, thank you. Anybody? No public comment, okay. Council comments. Libby?
I have nothing.
Ryan?
Nope, nothing tonight.
Just want to say welcome to Sean.
Oh, yeah.
Welcome aboard. That's all? What you got?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, and make a motion to approve and sign vouchers.
Make a motion to approve and sign vouchers.
All in favor? I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:40. All in favor? Aye. Thanks for coming.